The guy that...
Good morning, everyone. It's like 8:58. County Council meeting of May the 28th. Start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this won't be like the greatest spectacle in racing. This will just be a normal meeting. Couple of things to do here. You mean you have to turn my volume up?
Yeah.
Everybody tells me to call now.
Well, zero, so...
As the agenda been posted.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Are those in favor of the agenda as...
You want me to roll?
Oh, yeah. Next on the line. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we'll do roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Present.
Ms. Lassiter?
Here.
Ms. Piper?
Here.
Ms. Quakenbush?
Here.
Mr. Shuys?
Here.
Maybe we ought to move that roll call up there behind the pledge to the flag, okay Denise?
Okay.
Okay, now I need a motion to approve the minutes of April the 23rd.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Larry, second by Jessica. Any questions, additions, corrections? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander is the chairman of the Tax Abatement Committee and he's asked that we move tax abatement before we do financial and transfer, so I'll turn the meeting over to him and just look at it. There he is, hiding back there.
Good morning.
We've got two tax abatements to take a look at this morning.
That is correct. Do you have them in any particular order on your agenda?
Magna first.
Tracy, would you like to address Magna first?
Good morning, council. You hear me okay?
Yeah.
I'm Tracy Lutton with the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. I'm here this morning with officials from Magna. They are here to request a tax abatement on a new investment they're making of approximately $9.3 million in new equipment, and this will result in the addition of 50 new employees. That's plus the 461 they currently have, which they will retain. Employees are going to be paid an average wage of $17.37 an hour. We checked the 2018 Department of Workforce Development data. That is a nice chunk above the county average for manufacturing. Magna's grown steadily in our community over the last 15 or so, 15-plus years, making a number of investments over that time, many of which folks don't know about if you don't work there. And they've rarely come to ask for any assistance, trying to focus on asking for help from the county and the state only when it's needed to make a project work financially, and this is one of those occasions. So, of course, you know that abatement does not mean that the company will not pay taxes. This is merely a phase-in. And over the course of the abatement, you should have a schedule in your packet that shows the... Their liability will still be about $441,000, approximately. So, I thank you for your consideration with this resolution. This time I'd like to invite Stephen Bran to the podium, who is representing. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tracy. Good morning, council. My name is Stephen Bran. I'm the general manager for Magna Powertrain Muncie, 4701 South Cowan Road. I'm here if you have any questions.
Can you just explain a little bit to the council about what the project is? You're bringing a new line on?
Yeah, we're going to bring in a new assembly line, so the automotive components, manufacturing, and assembly.
So you're making the parts now and you're going to have the assemblies?
Ron, we are making some of the parts today. We're going to bring in some additional competencies and make some new components that will go into this assembly.
And this is what part of the gear train?
It is the transfer case in the powertrain.
In a four-way ride?
That's correct.
Just for the federal market. And Steve, about the only thing I hear negative from people is this, well, why should these people get their taxes abated when nobody else does? And just for the record, their assessed value at the current time is $27,170,580. That's their current assessed value before they're adding this new product line. So that's a pretty important number to remember. We're not abating anything but giving you a little help on the brand-new equipment.
That's correct. As Tracy mentioned, we don't always come and ask for assistance. We make a number of investments without coming, only if we need to make a project work. So this $9 million is a small portion of our assessed value.
Well, I've talked to you on this one too. This is one that you've expressed to me that this is something that you need to be competitive on this project. It's not something that you're just coming to ask for because you're coming to ask for it. It's something that you need or would like to have to be able to stay competitive with what you're doing.
That is correct.
Right, yeah. And Magna's been, had several tax abatements before and, I believe, fulfilled. Do you have to refresh my memory, all of them?
Yeah, so we've always fulfilled or exceeded. I believe there are still two active abatements that are in play. One was for the MOD 2 of the A speed and one is for the Houston division. And the number of heads associated with that, with those two that are still active, was 361, and we're at 416 today.
Well, last time around, when I took a tour of the plants, we kind of talked about this at the tax abatement meeting, but the way I say which plant is which is the slower-moving, more precise plant is the one, if you're heading south, on the left, and this is for the faster-moving plant that's on the right. Is that correct?
Yep. This is for the Cowan division, which is the white building.
Yep.
You have enough square footage to accommodate this?
We do have enough square footage, Ron.
I hadn't heard anything about any additions during that.
Yeah, there will be no brick-and-order for this work.
The state went now. When I toured your plant, I was so involved with the plant and with you. At that time, you were having trouble getting a good workforce. Has that gotten any better?
Jane, we still do have our challenges in the area of getting workforce. I am glad to say that 69% of our employees are from Delaware County.
Thank you.
95.5% are from the immediate surrounding counties. We only have three employees that come further than one county away.
Pretty good. Any other questions? Comments? Sure, thank you. I cut my teeth making gears at Chevrolet Muncie, and I'm a toolmaker. I really am proud that you guys are picking that business up for this community.
Give a resolution number on that, please.
2019, day 01A.
Real quick, how many jobs was that that was going to become in Delaware County?
Fifty new ones, right.
Fifty new ones, yeah.
Not, uh... Did I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2019, 01A.
Second.
Moved by Scott, second by Jessica. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you Tracy for bringing this forward for us.
Thank you. You have a statement I would like to read. "Magna's been a proud member of the community since 2006. The project approved by the council today is evidence of our commitment to the community and our employees. By planning to create 50 new jobs and invest $9.3 million in personal property, Magna will grow and further solidify its presence in the community. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. And you're homegrown too, right?
Yeah, Cowan.
Okay, so we'll move right along to the financial agenda?
Yeah, one more abatement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
That's all right, so...
Two years, I'm sorry.
Yeah, council members, bragging, look out, Delaware County Economic Development. Also, in your packet is an application from Midwest Metals Products Company. As you're mostly all familiar with Midwest Metals and their continued investment to reinvest in their equipment and machinery at their facility. There is an abatement application for a mesh welding machine that will place wires in desired positions to be welded together, with excess wire being trimmed off. This replaces an old Schlatter machine that is having ongoing performance issues. The purchase price of the machinery is $1,323,000. In the application notes, they have been in business for 98 years in Delaware County, headquartered in Delaware County, total number of current employees 157. The average wage at Midwest Metals is $15 an hour and 24 cents. The average wage for the jobs associated with this abatement is $14 an hour. Company does offer health insurance. They have completed the application and all corresponding documents, including a map of their location, check for $150 to the county. And the total abatement schedule for this abatement as a five-year phased-in abatement is $47,510. That results in a cash revenue positive to the county of $71,590 over the same, over a 10-year period. I'm happy to answer any questions. Mr. Chad Smith and Mr. Steve Smith are with us this morning. I don't know if they'd like to say anything more than welcome to.
Before you get started, the tax abatement committee met, and I probably should have said this before Magna, but did approve Magna. We did not take a vote, but we did check to see that everything was in order with the application because Steve serves on the tax abatement committee and we were one short, so it would have just been one myself on there. So we're bringing this to the council for the council's approval without a recommendation, but we did go through the application and everything seems to be in order.
Was a revision to the resolution also that Denise has the new resolution? So the resolution that came in your packet originally, the address should have been 3701 South Cowan Road, the location of this abatement.
Good morning, I'm Chad Smith, CFO at Midwest Metal Products. Happy to answer any questions, just to kind of add a little more detail. It's a new machine, just replacing an old Schlatter. The one it's replacing is about 20 years old. This has new technology, has capacity to give us the ability to continue to grow.
Might be good to tell the audience how many people you have working there.
Total, I think it's 157 at the time, and that's up slightly from prior year.
80% from Delaware County?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jane, second by Ryan Downey.
He's about to say yes.
You got it. We're all the way away.
Congratulations.
Okay. Council, have any comments? Roll call.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Quakenbush?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Tracy. Now we'll move on to the financial. As soon as Ron gets away, yeah.
Okay.
Just a second, I gotta get my paper. Okay. All right. Financial, have any other?
Plane commission, 101, executive director, $4,975. Total request, $4,975.
Marta here, somebody from her office?
No, we didn't.
Hmm?
Steve asked for the appropriation for her. I mean, is everybody aware of what this is?
No, have no idea.
Okay.
She didn't come to financial, I mean, it's Steve, so...
Yeah, he was on...
Anybody there to tell us?
Okay, Becky, when was it, February? On Marta's check, anyway, she got hacked at her bank, and somebody got four of her paychecks. And so we checked with the bank. Of course, there was nothing they could do. Our insurance don't cover it because we were $25 short of meeting the insurance criteria. It had to be $5,000. It's $4,975. But... What else do I want to say? Basically, her bank account got hacked and somebody else got her money. A form come down from Human Resources changing her bank account. It looked legit. So Lauren changed it. It wasn't Marta's signature. So it got changed because Human Resources sent a form down to change it. So it got changed, and then, and it had Marta's name, had everything on the form. They received it through email, I have to think. So she changed it, and then come to find out, four paychecks went somewhere else. There's nowhere else to get it but to ask for it from county. We had to go ahead and pay her. I mean, she needed her money. So we went ahead and paid her the amount, which was $4,975, and now we need to put that money back into her account or we won't have enough to pay her at the end of the year. And like I said, we were $25 short of the insurance covering it.
Are we looking into actually how this occurred at all, or...
I mean, there's nothing else to do. We had the paperwork. We got the paperwork from Human Resources and did what we were supposed to do.
Right, I'm not putting blame on anybody. You said somebody forged somebody's signature, right?
Mm-hmm. She's turned it over. I mean, Marta's went and talked to the prosecutor and the bank, and as far as I know, there's nothing left for them to do, so...
To answer your question, yes. The commissioners have been in talks with Steve and Jim Fluke, and they are in the process of putting better systems in place. It wasn't that her bank account specifically was hacked, it was our email system was hacked. So an email name was created, and instead of M. Moody, it was M. Marta. They still had the same ending, and that's how the... So it was our email that was hacked, not her bank account.
We're not changing anybody's bank accounts unless that person walks in themselves.
I'm kind of concerned why she wasn't consulted personally what happened. I mean, she's right next door to Human Resources.
She's the one that found it, Marta is.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, when the application came through.
Oh, why they didn't ask her?
Why didn't verify it personally?
She was hurt, she was out. She hurt her hands.
Oh, that's right, she was simply... Broke her heart.
Is this something we have to approve today, or can we approve this next month? Have a chance to dig into it a little bit?
I don't care when you approve, as long as you do it for the end of the...
You'll have enough money, though, if we wait until next month to approve this?
Right, we'll just be short that at the end of the year.
There hasn't been a motion or a second yet, I don't think.
No, but there's, I mean, I...
I mean, we have to have it, and this was the only place.
It's, I don't know.
It's not hurtful.
We're not going to avoid...
Seems like we've got safeguards put in place now to prevent the same type of thing happening.
There's a shortage.
Yeah, if somebody wants their bank account changed, they physically have to walk into payroll now. We're not going to accept it in the other...
It's a shortage in that account, no matter what. If some way, somehow, it was prosecuted and collected, that money would just go back to the general public. So there's no reason to delay it, really.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Larry, second by Mary.
Can't do two.
Mr. Jason Rogers?
Jason Rogers is emergency management director. I just want to make you aware, or maybe have you think back to the incident in Madison County with the ransomware, and this is a similar hack. And Jim's been trying to safeguard this. We've had several meetings with regards to internet security and those types of things, and literally there are thousands of attacks a day. So this isn't something that, you know, we weren't preparing for. They change all the time. You know, how many of you are getting robo-calls on your cellphones now? And they're just trying until they are successful. So it's not one of those things that we can necessarily investigate, and we're going to find somebody. I'm not sure. I believe the number was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that Madison County had to pay to get their computer system back online. They lost everything from their records-keeping ability to their police fire dispatch ability and their NDTs, and that was a couple of years ago. So it is a huge problem. It's something that Jim and I have talked about many times, and at least at this point, we're doing everything that we can do. I was not aware of this situation, but it's very reminiscent of the ransomware that happened to Madison County. I'm just glad it didn't happen on a larger scale here. So just want to make you aware of that, if you didn't remember that, it's something to think about. So be very, 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 very careful with your email and what you do on our computer system network. Thanks.
I have a question. Do we have any other employees that may have tried to change? Okay, so she's isolated.
That's the only one, so far.
I saw this on the backup come through, and I guess I was assuming that you guys would discuss it at finance committee meeting, but if steps have been taken, then I'm okay going forward with it.
This really was...
And I apologize, I forgot Steve wasn't going to be here, and I wasn't here. I should have had Marta come over, but...
We let it go.
I didn't even think about it.
But this is... I was hacked several years ago. I've got two systems now blocking my computer because I get county business. I've got one that reports to me monthly that tells me that no one has even tried to hack me. So I don't know what you would get on such a broad basis, but this was actually not a hack. This was just a communications thing where somebody sent an email with her name on it. It was an email. He said it was an email message.
But it...
You get a hack in your computer, I'll tell you, it takes weeks to get it cleared out. I've been hacked.
The money was actually collected from a bank out in California. I do know that that much was investigated. So we were hacked through our email server. They emailed HR asking for basically a deposit slip to change their bank account, and one was, a blank form was emailed back, it was filled out, and then sent back, and then forwarded down to payroll.
But that didn't hack our system, that only made the communications...
It was both. So we were hacked because it was a county email address. It was, but it was like...
The Delaware County email address?
Yes, it was M. Marta@CU.Dellaware. So we were hacked, and someone did receive it.
Oh, how they got in with the wrong name? That doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
I've got too many firewalls that are easy to get, and they're not expensive.
Ron, it doesn't have anything to do with firewalls.
No.
It has nothing to do with firewalls. It's not a traditional what you're thinking. Literally, a person can create an email that looks like you sent it out and send it to everybody in the county, and you will have no knowledge of that happening. It's far, we're far past advanced firewalls in what we're talking about.
But that goes into my...
It doesn't go into your computer, that's where...
Well, no, I get emails in, what's it called? Below the trash.
Spam.
Spam.
Right.
That would have been spam.
No, it's something different. Spam mail is identified differently than what we're talking about. Hackers, so the people that built your computer, the actual individuals that built your computer and built your information, how you work, have decided now that it's easier for them to make more money to work for the bad guys.
Right.
So they know how to hack your computer, so they go over and work for a hacker. And then new kids coming out of college are trying to figure out how to fight those guys, then they figure out, I can make more money for the hackers. And it's a revolving door of people trying to figure out and try to stop how they get and capture your information.
My service allows me to screen my email, but only those people that I say could come in.
But it's...
So if that came in under another name, it'd go to my spam.
No, it doesn't.
No, that's different. I'm telling you it's different, and you and I need to sit down with Jim Fluke so you understand.
No, I know, I'm already know more than I need to know.
I'm...
Can't spell out the word.
I'm going to beg to differ.
I don't want to get into that IT stuff.
Well, it's far more complicated than what...
You don't want me to worry, that's all. I thought I had it covered.
We all have to worry.
The malware, spamware, and all the stuff that you're talking about is only as good as the day that you buy it and the day it was created. The day that somebody walks out of that company and says, I know the backdoor to all this information, it's, you're in danger again.
Well, I know my father passed away, and his accountant was hacked, and that accounting firm provides me with another service on top of the two I have, and they got hacked good.
We have a lot...
That's all I can tell you.
Still, well, so there's no answer to the problem.
Okay, I'll call for the question.
All right. Well, I really think, since he's putting this on that machine there, the general public should understand that these complications are here. That's part of the reason for my asking questions sometimes, to let the people watch this on television.
I think the general public understands it. Ron, I think it's...
Well...
That's why I'm calling for the question.
I'm not so sure. Not if we got hacked on something that easy.
Ron.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
I'm going to vote yes, but it's the first time we've had to take money out of the operating balance.
I know.
That's unfortunate. We worked so hard. That's why Scott was so reluctant, I don't blame him. Go ahead.
Prosecutor, estate seizure, funding, 211 supplies, $1,500, 393 schooling, $1,500. Total request, $3,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Any questions? This was approved by finance. Roll call.
Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Handy corrections, 1122.
I'm going to interrupt her and ask for a motion to approve as presented.
Thank you.
You want 1122, 1123?
I want the communications, 1122, yeah.
If you want to do...
All their budgets, all their budgets as presented.
Okay.
1122, 1123, and 2501.
Yes, move to approve.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jessica. This is an annual budget that they're required to do fiscally instead of annually, and we've already approved... And we've already approved their first half a year budget. Now we're going to approve the next half. And then starting in next year, their budget will be fiscal the same as the county budget.
Hang on a minute. Let me check here. Is this, is this the six months' extension?
Yes.
Okay, this is the six months' extension to go to...
This is the normal six months that they always do.
Yeah. This is the normal six months.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. About that. Any other questions? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Surveyors cornerstone perpetuation, one seventy-three health insurance, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Total request, five hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Larry. Any questions? This was approved by finance. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
I heard you that time.
Corners copy fees, I've been told that's tabled. Is that correct?
Yes.
Emergency medical service?
Wait a minute.
Didn't we...
We approved that.
I was...
I, I've written tabled on the...
Oh, no, 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 excuse me. It's not been tabled. We didn't approve the Dutch door because they were going to talk to the building superintendent about that.
What about the computers?
The computers.
The computer was not taken.
Computers, you were gonna, they were gonna talk to Jim Pluke.
Yeah, just, just to see if they could get a good deal or something. And to make sure they're compatible with the system, right?
Yeah.
But we approved the computers.
We were gonna, we were gonna compare Plukes to what I talked, what I spoke to at that spot.
Yeah, to make sure what, whatever you did was compatible with our system.
Right.
So the, the appropriation request is for eighteen hundred dollars for two computers.
Okay, so the Dutch door normally was tabled.
Right.
Yes.
Did that work out all right? They did a nice job down there on that one.
Okay, so the corners copy fees, four forty-one equipment, eighteen hundred dollars. Total request, eighteen hundred.
Move to approve?
Moved by Jessica?
Second.
Second by Larry.
Is that fifteen hundred dollars? Is that tabled for elimination?
They're withdrawing, they're...
Okay.
Total request is eighteen hundred, yeah. And I have written approved by finance.
I have written tabled.
Okay. What'd you say? Mary, you got the third one here. You're on the finance committee.
Mona said that he was gonna check with the commissioners.
Yeah, on the Dutch door, yeah.
Yes.
Anything else? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
EMS capital improvement, one seventy-one FICA, one thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Total request, one thousand nine hundred and twelve fifty.
Move to approve?
Move by Jessica, second by Scott. That was approved by finance. This was just a shortfall in FICA, correct?
You know, when they did the part-time request, they forgot to ask for the FICA.
Roll call.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
EMS capital... Wait a minute. Hang on. Lost it at least. Okay. EMS capital improvement, four forty-one, six portable radios, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and thirty-two cents. Total request, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ten thirty-two.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica. Brian, is that you down there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cut it.
Yep.
Questions? Comments? Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
EMS ambulance replacement fund, four forty-one, chain orders for ambulance rechassis, five thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total request, five thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Jane. Questions? We'll brief them. Jason, on what this is about. It was approved by finance.
This was a truck that we sent in. If you recall back in late November, we had to get in line to have this truck rechassis. It's done. We actually have possession of it. While it was on the line, they gave us a rechassis cost of like a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So that's what we had appropriated. As it went through the line, it needed a new floor and things that they couldn't see when, before they tore it all apart. So this, this is the, the change order for the repairs to get it back up to standard.
It didn't go to rush, did it?
No, we, we don't buy garbage. People by the left.
Was, was this done by, was it Pen Care who?
Well, Pen Care's the, the dealer, but Braun, the, the actual manufacturer of the ambulance is, are the ones that actually rechassis, remount. And so they're, they're working within their own product.
It'd be something my relatives, my great-grandmother's maiden name was Braun.
Since you brought it up, that deal that you got on that used ambulance was evidently a really good one, considering the purchase price from the...
Yeah, our plan for that truck has always been to rechassis the box. That, that truck's, that truck's never meant to have been a frontline ambulance. And it's actually next to go for its, I mean, we've had it for about a year or so. It's, it's, it's worked its recomp, I'm sure. But it's, our plan for that truck was always to remount the box because it was at such cost savings.
How long does it take, this process here, to get it, once you send it in and get it back?
So the, the actual process, when they start to tear the truck apart, is about ninety days, ninety to a hundred days. The problem is, is there's, there's a hundred and fifty day line to get, to get your trucks done, so...
Waiting list.
Right now, they were, last, last time I checked with the, with the sales rep, the, they were, they were three hundred days from conception to a new truck. And, and about a hundred and twenty, a hundred, a hundred days, a hundred to a hundred and twenty days on a rechassis.
So you're just about after getting line a year ahead.
For a new one.
Not even know exactly which one you're gonna get done.
Yeah, and that, and that's, you know, that's kind of the difficulty. If you spec it from, from scratch, then, then you'll know the price, you know, before you place the order. But when you're doing remounts, you know, they tear into something and they find something that got fixed or something that's, they're recommending that you change. We went from a, a standard floor to an antibacterial, longer life floor, and it was, that was one of their recommendations, and, and we just think that's a good idea. This, this particular truck is outfitted with the power load system, which is something new that we've, we've got one truck, and now we've got, this is the second one, and we'll be doing those from now on.
Is that, when you say power loading, is that talking about your, your employees are not having to do any lifting whatsoever?
Right. The, the truck itself has, has a spear that comes out of the back of the truck and grabs the cot. The cot legs raise on the road. And then you, you don't have, it's basically almost like a hydraulic winch, if you will, that pushes you, pushing back into the scratch.
It's, it's a wonderful, wonderful additive to an ambulance, I'll just say that. I've had the opportunity to use, use something of that nature, so.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Uh, Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Pre-trial diversion, one seventy-three health insurance, two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-six cents. Total request, two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Approved by finance. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Transfer agenda, jail, one oh one correctional officer, minus two, twenty-four thousand, five ninety-seven sixty-nine. A one oh one correctional officer, plus twenty-four thousand, five sixty-nine, or, I'm sorry, twenty-four thousand, five ninety-seven sixty-nine. Total request, zero.
Move to approve?
Actually, can we amend that to go to B one oh one? That officer never bothered even show up for his first day.
But you never filled A, right?
No, we did not. His name, his PI form was completed and sent in, so I don't know how you...
But we never paid anything out of it, right?
No, we did not. So I think we can still use A because we've never actually paid anybody out of that position. Okay. Okay. I'll just adjust the name on the line, or PI form.
With the, yeah, with the PI, just keep him in A because we've not actually used that account, so we might as well use it.
Correct. Because I'm sure we'll use it later.
You need a second. Second.
I...
So the B thing is out, right?
Jessica made the motion, Larry made the second.
Yeah, I got it. And the B is out.
Yeah, just leave it at A because we've not actually used it.
Okay, this is just a new boy. Roll call, please.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Sheriff, B one twenty-three, minus one thousand, six oh seven.
Can I interrupt you a minute? I have approved with possible tweaks. Were there any tweaks?
Yeah, I'm gonna read them.
You're gonna read them as they're...
I'm gonna read the tweaks.
Okay, good.
Uh, okay, B one twenty-three, minus one thousand, six oh seven forty. D one sixteen, plus one thousand, six oh seven forty. B one twenty-three should read minus twenty-six thousand, eight ninety-two thirty. C one twenty-three should read twenty-six thousand, eight ninety-two thirty. A one twenty, minus twenty-five thousand, four eighty-eight. B one twenty, plus twenty-five thousand, four eighty-eight. A one twenty-six, minus twenty-five thousand, four eighty-eight. B one twenty-six, plus twenty-five thousand, four eighty-eight. Total request, zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Larry. That's the nice thing about having finance overhead at this meeting is that sometimes there are some discrepancies. And this gives the auditor a chance to look at their payroll records and such and make sure everything's in order when it comes to council. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Public defender, one seventy-four, minus nineteen thousand, three oh five. A one seventy-four, plus nineteen thousand, three oh five. Total request, zero.
Move to approve?
Moved by Jessica?
Second.
Second by Larry. This is a replacement. It was okay by finance. Any question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Thank you.
Communications, one twenty-four, minus five thousand. Oh, I'm sorry, that's A one eleven, minus five thousand. One twenty-nine OIC, plus fifteen hundred. One ninety-four training, plus fifteen hundred. One ninety-five holiday, plus one thousand. One seventy-one FICA, plus one thousand. A one eleven, minus twenty-one thousand, seven sixty-six, twenty, seventy-two. B one eleven, plus twenty-one thousand, seven sixty-six, seventy-two. Total request, zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Larry, second by Jessica. Call, you want to say anything or any questions or calls? Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Uh, recorders perpetuation, one oh six B, minus twenty-two thousand, five sixty-three eighty-five. One oh six C, plus twenty-two thousand, five sixty-three eighty-five. Total request, zero.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Scott. Are you making notes on this? I don't know whether the finance committee, if we approve this or...
Mine says approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
Motion to approve financial transfers and amended salary arrangements with life reinsurance.
Second.
Moved by Larry, second by Jessica.
Done with it.
Roll call. You're doing good, Larry.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush?
Yes.
I did have the notes on that. The recorders, I have replacements in board. See, I have employees that have A's, have replacements. Good luck to them. Need all the help we can get, you know, seeing where our population in the United States is going down by newborns. Okay. Did the tax abavements. Don't have any appointments. Personnel have anything? See personnel here.
Should go vacation.
Okay. Magna and Midwest is done. Other new business? We have the sheriff's contract. Sheriff is here. You all, I hope, have copies. We've been working on this. I'd say we, I've been kind of the go-between guy. Scott's been working with the sheriff on this, and Mr. Hughes has been working with Mr. Brooke. And I believe we have a document that everyone's approved as sheriff.
Oh, I agree. It's been through several revisions, so this is something everybody can accept.
So we need a resolution, no more. You know, we didn't get a resolution with Magna, did we?
Yeah.
Here we go. No, not Magna, it'll be bigger.
Twenty nineteen, I thought.
Magna last... Point one there.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Under resolution.
I think the motion's made by zero one nine.
Okay. Okay.
So we need a resolution, sheriff. Is the O twenty?
John Burke said the resolution approves a salary contract. They already approved...
They did. They approved it. We need a resolution. We have a resolution to approve it. That's what we have here. Resolution, county council, Delaware County, resolution number twenty nineteen dash. I don't have a number.
Twenty.
O two O. Commissioners had originally passed a contract, and then they passed an amendment, twenty nineteen, O, O two A. At their last meeting, I was in attendance at that meeting, and at that point in time, the sheriff was there and he agreed. And he's here today to help us finalize this. By statute, both bodies, or all three elected bodies must agree, correct? Mr. Hughes has worked with Mr. Brooke, and Scott has worked diligently with the sheriff. And I appreciate very much everybody's due diligence. Took a little while, but I think we've come to a resolution. Do I have a motion and a second?
Moved.
Second.
By Scott, second by Jessica. Anyone else have questions? I have one comment, and I mean this sincerely. It's not anything that affects any council member or anyone else in this room except future sheriffs. This is something that affects the pension plan, and I hopefully, and will... This is something that affects the pension plan, and I hopefully, and will do what I can to help the bar board work with the actuaries to come up with a solution, because I, I feel a little imbalance about what a sitting sheriff can draw on the pension, and that's just one person's opinion. As far as what this sheriff has done, has been very positive, and in the right direction to help soften that problem, but the next sheriff might not be as opinionable as they. So thank you very much, Tony, for what you've done. Because that's, that's always been the true concern of the council, is that many pension plans across this country are literally going belly up, or, and I mean many, and, and if you look at what the Indiana Public Employees Retirement Fund has done over the past few years, when I came in office, the, the county employees' contribution was actually more than what the county general was putting into the pension plan. Now, we're putting over eight percent more than what the employees put into perf. Now, those state legislature brag about how healthy perf is, but they, they just keep jacking up what the county general has to pay. It's over eleven percent now that we pay. It makes us, it makes it so much more difficult for us to even think of a salary increase, because we automatically get FICA and all that stuff, and then the eleven percent perf, it's another twenty percent, roughly, on top of, of that. So, that's the only concern that I look at as a fiscal agent, is that we have to look to the future and make sure that we don't put a burden on future government officials that, that won't be able to afford to pay it with these tax caps like they are. That's what I have to say about that. Thank you, Tony, for all your help.
Real quick, Ron, can I?
Sure.
Chime in real quick. I've had a few phone calls about this as well, and I just want to clear this, and at least have it said, the reason this has to be done is because of Indiana code, correct?
Oh, very, definitely.
Okay, I, that's, I just wanted to specify.
When I was alerted to the code, I went straight to Mr. Hughes, and, and he affirmed it, and that's why we had that emergency meeting in December, because I was unaware. Mr. Brooke told me later on that we had a year to do this, when the sheriff's elected. I didn't know that part of the code, right? So we didn't have to have the emergency meeting in December, but we did, and we got the salary part ironed out then. But as far as this negotiation of the salary, we did have the year to get it done, so we've done it, in somewhat a timely basis.
And something I learned at auditor school this last week, if the prosecutor's salary goes up in July, so does the sheriff's.
Oh, yeah, I knew that, we already knew that.
Even though, you know, in the past, where we said you can't change an elected official in the year, sheriff...
You can't here, yeah.
And that's a good possibility.
Actually, it's in one of these documents someplace, that we just, that we passed, right?
Yes.
I mean, oh, it's in this one?
It's in the contract.
In the contract? Yeah, okay, in this one over here. Okay. Sheriff's contract, it's in here, that says if his, if the prosecutor's salary goes up, and that's set by the state of Indiana, state legislature.
Right, in the middle of the year.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Well...
Make sure you understand that. It goes up in July, it goes up too.
It goes up.
He's the only one you can change in the middle of the year.
That's what's at his love about state rules, isn't it? You have to abide by them, whether it's against the law or not. One law, a cornered example. Okay, anyone else want to make a speech?
We got a speech about...
I know, I'm getting ready. No, I'm not, no, I'm just getting ready for roll call. You've got the sheriff smiling now, he's looking for his attorney for a minute. And honestly, and, and I shouldn't say honestly, but actually, there was a lot of work done by different people on this. It took a little bit of time, it's kind of tough to continue with your daily routine and, and negotiate something like this, but I appreciate what everyone has done. There was two lawyers, and our liaison, Scott, and Mr. Skinner, and it, it came to fruition, and that's a, a good deal. Roll call.
Ms. Lassiter?
Yes.
Ms. Piper?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Mr. Quickenbush?
Yes.
Anyone from the audience wish to make a speech? I have a little bit on President's comments.
Ron, can I pipe in real quick?
Sure.
Just wanted to say, actually, just recognize, Salem Township EMS and Fire, they went through a pretty rough time this past month, having one of their apparatus involved in an accident, so I just kind of wanted to throw some love their way there. Last night, we had some inclement weather, I was on the phone with some county employees at an event, and your EMA was on it, so Jason Rogers, well done, Sheriff Skinner, well done, you guys were on it, and we all appreciate it, so, thank you.
You know, that, that storm was weird, and I stood out on my front porch in Yorktown, and that sky off in the southwest was so clear that I could see the red light on top of the water tower, and I'd never seen that before, and I could hear the rumble, I think from Clearwater, Pendleton, because when I was a kid, we had a tornado go through our farm, and that sky was pink thin as it was now, and I could see that pink sky way over in the distance. I didn't realize it was that far, I thought surely, the daylight was getting whack, but it was farther, more farther away, it was that clear, because it was just as calm as could be there on my front yard. It was very, very interesting, very interesting. Okay, well, I have a couple of things. I sent a letter to all of you to approve as a kind of our annual greeting to the department heads and elected officials, so I need your approval of that, and your signatures, so we can send that out. I hope you've all read, so I need a motion to approve the annual letter, or you can all say aye, if that's good enough.
Is that the letter?
Got the letter, I think.
I need to put that in the folder.
Anyone have any comments, or checking, I think I'll send you all a comment. Okay, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those saying sign, we will send it out, needs to be signed. I have a couple of remarks today about public safety, and as far as that goes, if any of my fellow council members would like to follow up, I'm, I'm gonna be as concise and quick as I can about it, but there's, there's so much discussion about our communications center and our emergency medical service, and what the city of Muncie's proposal is, it's confusing to me, and why it's confusing to me is because I was, if, if you will, honored to be a part of building the first communication system in this county, and I was also very involved in putting paramedics on the street, and the ambulance service was three years old, or three years young, when I came in office as a county commissioner. And both of those systems were put together with great cooperation with the city government, especially the communication system. We traveled with city employees and the mayor at that time to two different states to discuss and review, and, and make a decision on what kind of system to put in our community. We went to Ohio, Hamilton County, Ohio, we went to Peoria, Illinois, and another town in Illinois, it's right there next door. We went through the jail there, we went through the first communication system that was set up in the United States of America in Hamilton, Ohio, it started in nineteen forty-nine. Our system is, right now, somewhat patterned after what they are doing there, and had for that long a period of time. I know enough about it to know that there are protocols that have been, been designed, I know that the staffing was created originally with half of the people in that system to be county-paid employees, and half to be city employees. I know that I was not in office at the time, when the doors were open for business, it was decided by the officials at that time, both city and county, that because of fringe benefit conflicts, et cetera, the two groups would be all paid by the county government, and it's been going that way since. And I'm, I'm just really, really concerned about what kind of conflicts are gonna appear, because this was one of the very first things we learned when we went to these other communities, is that they warned us about conflicts within the service if you didn't consolidate together. That was one of the very first things we learned, was try to get your protocols, try to get your various services, like fire, and police, and sheriff, all together, so that the communications people know how to communicate with these different entities. And with what I hear and read, I'm just afraid that we're gonna go backward instead of forward in our systems, and I'm worried about, and that's about all I have to say. Anyone else want to comment?
I wasn't gonna say anything, Ron, but, but I agree with you. You know, Jason's had to struggle with, for, struggled with this, Jason Rogers has had to struggle with this for two years now with what EMS. I know there were communications meetings where there were agreements reached, and, and the city did not hold up their end of that agreement. And I think that's the problem with the, the county officials, is, is now we can't, we can't trust the, the city of Muncie, and I think as soon, the sooner we have a new mayor, the better, unfortunately, and I hate to have to say that, but there have been too many instances where things have happened, and, and that's just, that's my opinion on it, as soon as we get somebody that we can deal with, I think things will get infinitely better than they are now.
I think, just as a little follow-up, I've told this to Mr. Rogers on more than one occasion on the telephone, that this county council, and I believe I'm speaking for all seven of us, and if I'm not, you correct me, but we will support you in any way, shape, or form that we can, within the financial boundaries that we live in this county. We, I don't think there's a council member that won't bend over by it, or to try to make whatever happens work, and I mean that sincerely, and if anyone feels differently, say so.
Well, I'll just say thank you to our EMS professionals, I mean, they dealt with a, I'd say a lot of, a lot of stuff they shouldn't have had to, we became EMS professionals, so, thank you, Jason, you and your staff, appreciate you.
Well, and it all starts, the heartbeat's in that communications, Paul's department is, is so key, I mean, that's, that's it, calls come there first, no one, EMS, fire, anybody else gets where they're supposed to do unless the communication system runs like a clock, twenty-four seven, can't stop. And I think that's something that I've always been very proud of, because we did do a lot of due diligence, we being the city and the county, we went together in a city van, rode off to different states, and took our time, took other people's time, to try to get this community the best it could have, and I believe that's what we have, and done. Thank you all. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those saying sign. Thank you all for coming.